Good evening, happy Thursday. Happy 3rd of June. This is our last school committee meeting, so thank you for joining us at home. I am calling this meeting to order at 7:04 PM. And let's begin with our pledge of allegiance. So, school committee members, please, and central office team, please join me in unmuting yourselves and beginning our meeting with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one and even under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Please remember to mute yourselves. Veronica, may we please have a roll call for attendance purposes?
Roll call for attendance, Ms. Enriquez? Ms. Enriquez? You're unmuted, but I can hear you. I saw you. Ms. Santiago? Mr. Jimenez?
Present.
Ms. Alfaro?
Present.
Ms. Hernandez is running late. Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson? Ms. Carlisle? Ms. Carlisle?
Present.
Ms. Velez?
Present.
The six members present in three accents.
Thank you, Veronica. A few members are running late, so they will be joining us in just a few moments. But with a heavily jam-packed agenda, we'd like to get started and start with our presentations. But before we do that, I have a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting on May 6.
I made a motion to accept the meetings of May 6 and comment to the record.
Second.
Wonderful. Thank you. Veronica, do we have any public comments for tonight's meeting?
We do not.
Wonderful. Moving right along. I would now like to turn it over to our superintendent for tonight's presentation.
Great. So, as we said, we have presentations of retirees and certificates and department awards. We added department awards as a result of the year that we've had. And so, I'm so excited to, we made a presentation of our retirees certificates, department awards, and students of the year because we aren't in person and we wanted to make it special. So, I'm going to go ahead and start our presentation. The superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt gratulations to our retirees on their contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of their retirement. So, first, I'll start with our custodians. Alfonso Velez retired from the Williams Middle School Complex as a custodian after more than 19 years. Security guards. Patricia Powder retired from the Mary C. Burke Complex as a security guard after more than 12 years. David Fadetti retired from Chelsea High School as a security guard after more than 20 years. Next are nurses aides. Andrea Rodriguez will retire as the John Silver Early Learning Center's nurses aide after more than 21 years. Maria Foras will retire as a district nurses aide after more than 20 years. Next is our data management specialist. Blanca Gomez retired from the Parent Information Center after more than 22 years. Next are our principal account clerks. Maria Ardaña retired from the Chelsea Public Schools Business Office after more than nine years. Our paraprofessionals. Maureen Levinson retired from the Wright Science and Technology Academy after more than 34 years. Shelley Olivades retired from the John Silver Early Learning Center after more than 27 years. Our teachers. Carol Resnick retired from Chelsea High School after more than 27 years as an English teacher. Catherine Fullgate retired from the John Silver Early Learning Center after more than 23 years. Gil Witty will retire from the Brown Middle School after more than 21 years. Mary Valentine will retire from the Brown Middle School after more than 23 years. Antonietta Tora retired from the John Silver Early Learning Center after more than 32 years. Pamela Frampton retired from the Hooks and Sakoloski School after more than 13 years. Andrea Conop will retire from the John Silver Early Learning Center after more than 34 years. And Maria Perkins will retire from the Berkowitz Elementary School after more than 24 years. From our assistant principals. Monica Caporelli will retire as assistant principal at the Berkowitz School after more than four years. And from our managers, Maria Acosta will retire as assistant business manager for payroll after more than 29 years. We wish all our retirees the best of luck and happiness on your retirement. Okay, and now I'd like to present our outstanding service award presented to Buildings and Grounds, the Buildings and Grounds Department, with deep appreciation and gratitude for the instrumental role played by the Buildings and Grounds Department during unprecedented times throughout the pandemic. Your work and dedication was vital in keeping our schools running. Chelsea Public Schools thanks you. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. It was a great team effort. We have a great team of Buildings and Grounds. Really proud of them. Just happy things to get back to some sort of.
The Outstanding Service Award is now presented to Airmark Chelsea Food Service with deep appreciation and gratitude for the instrumental role played by the Chelsea Food Services during unprecedented times throughout the pandemic. Your work and dedication was vital in keeping our schools running. Chelsea Public Schools would like to thank you, and we're so grateful. Thank you so much, guys, for all that you've done. Thank you. And our outstanding service award is presented to Chelsea Public Schools Technology Department with deep appreciation and gratitude for the instrumental role played by the CPS Technology Department during unprecedented times throughout the pandemic. Your work and dedication was vital in keeping our schools running. We want to thank you from Chelsea Public Schools and just recognize your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Whereas, Dr. Barbara Crowe Sinclair has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over 26 years. And whereas, Dr. Crowe Sinclair has been a dedicated director of adult learning since 1995 at the intergenerational literacy program with Chelsea Public Schools. And whereas, Dr. Crowe Sinclair has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. And whereas, Dr. Crowe Sinclair has conducted her responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism. And whereas, she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedications to the youth and adult learners of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved, that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Dr. Crowe Sinclair on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of her retirement. Congratulations, Dr. Barbara Crowe Sinclair. We're so glad and so grateful.
Thank you so much. It has been a true joy to be part of the community of Chelsea, and I am very grateful to the Chelsea Public Schools that this program continues on. Thank you.
Our outstanding service award is presented to Sarah Kent with deep appreciation of the service and care given to the students, families, and faculty of Chelsea Public Schools. Your commitment and dedication have been instrumental in staying true to our mission and values as a school community. Chelsea Public Schools would like to say thanks to Ms. Sarah Kent for her dedication and hard work and just all the years of achievement at Chelsea Public Schools. Sarah, we would miss you greatly. Congratulations, Jen.
For my mission. Thank you very much.
And now, I turn it over to our Chelsea School Principals to present the student of the year awards from each of our schools. Congratulations to our amazing and resilient students. Well, we're very happy to be here to present Brianna DeBorean with our student of the year award for the Berkowitz School. We're going to have Ms. Sugg say a few words, and then we'll present the award.
Good afternoon, everyone. This year has tested teachers and students in ways we could have never anticipated. And today, it's my honor to speak about a student of ours who has single-handedly brought comfort, life, and community into our virtual space. Brianna DeBorean's warmth and conscientiousness radiate through our collective computer screens every day. Her voice brings thoughtfulness and attention into our class. She carefully has others of her mind, noticing the smallest details that make each of her classmates important. Brianna is the definition of a reader, someone who pours over books for knowledge and enjoyment. Her creative nature draws her to fantastical worlds like Harry Potter and The Power of Poetry. She routinely volunteers to read out loud, even books she's found on her own that we think, she thinks we will all enjoy, and we drop everything to sit and listen. Reading and writing are Brianna's true loves, but she brings the same determination to her math, rising as a top student with brave questions and nonstop focus. In this year, when it's been easy to wonder if what we're doing is truly working, Brianna's feedback and smiles have made it all worthwhile. There have been moments when I've gotten emotional thinking about what it would be like to teach Brianna in class, in person. And in thinking of the growth she's made and others have too, all while miles away from their teachers, I am quickly grounded. We will be forever grateful for the light that you bring, Brianna, and that you brought to our lives this year. And we're certain that you will continue to bring other people's vibes forever by teaching. So, thank you and congratulations. And congratulations to the Brianna family.
So, Brianna, we now present you with the student of the year award for the Berkowitz Elementary School. We couldn't be happier that you're representing us.
Hello, I am Principal Art of the Hooks Elementary School, and we are so excited to be here today to present Mario Vargas Torres, the student of the year from the Hook School. I have with me his amazing teacher, Ms. Michaela O'Neil. She's going to give us some words about how fabulous Mario is.
Good afternoon. I am so proud to present Mario with the Hooks 2021 Student of the Year. This year, Mario is a fourth grader and a member of an Hola or online learning classroom. Mario has truly been the glue to our class since the first day of school. In a fully remote year, Mario has built a personal relationship with every member of our classroom. And on an online setting, this is truly remarkable, whether he is in a Zoom room.
The last audio. Maybe I did. I lost it as well. And I mean.
remained in Hola classroom. Mario is kept positive and welcome his 11 new classmates with open arms. He is dependable, thoughtful, and has the most infectious laugh that can brighten the most challenging of days. Although Mario works remotely from a variety of locations, he is always prepared, camera on, and ready to learn. Mario has made impressive academic gains this year, and he has learned how to be a strong advocate for himself. In addition, he has become our class tech whiz. When his classmates are struggling with their Chromebooks, he is the first to offer his assistants to walk them through step-by-step directions on how to solve their tech troubles. I really don't know what I would do about him. After a break, I unfortunately had to take a leave for a few weeks. Every day, his powder would get me the highs and lows of every day. It was no surprise to me that Mario was constantly flexible, supportive, kind, and knowledgeable for his substitute teachers and classmates. You didn't know this at the time, Mario, but that made me so proud. You really kept our pre-identity ship slow. Finally, when I asked Mario's classmates why he was so deserving of this award, they energetically responded, Mario is kind, helpful, he is always caring with his friends. The reason Mario deserves to be the student of the year is because he has worked so hard. He has always been so respectful, and he is so funny. We love you, Mario. Mario has been such a bright light for Hook School during his time here, and he couldn't be more deserving of this award. His new middle school classmates and teachers would be privileged to have him. We really wish you the best, Mario. Thank you, and thank you to Mario's family for their support and encouragement throughout this difficult school year. Thank you.
As you can see. As you can hear, this award is obviously appropriate for Mario. So, Mario, I'd like to present you with a certificate, student of the year for the Hooks Elementary School and a $25 Barnes &amp; Noble gift card. All right, congratulations, sir. We'll get an elbow there.
Oh, it's too gentle.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Brittany Hexon, fourth grade teacher at the Kelly School.
Hi, I'm Gerson Mesto Stio. And I'm Lisa Long. We're the principal of the Kelly School, and we are here to celebrate Gerson as the Kelly School's student of the year. With great honor, I would like to present, present student of the year for the Kelly School to Gerson Alexander Enriquez Stio. Throughout your Kelly School career, Alexander has consistently demonstrated integrity, determination, and respect. Gerson's dedication to learning and his drive to push himself to his ass to the best is truly inspiring. He has shown strength in being self-aware of his learning by asking clarifying questions to help guide his understanding, using resources to strengthen his work, and reflecting on his progress. Although this has been a stressful and unusual year, Alexander has come to class each day focused on building connections with his teachers and classmates, soaking up as much knowledge as he can get, and making his parents relax. Not only does he grow in all areas, but he's also showing grace while navigating new websites, showing patience with internet connection issues, and cooperating and helping a great leader with his classmates in breakout rooms. Alexander, with your fine power, creativity, and love of learning, I know you will continue to flourish. Congratulations, here's a friend.
And it's been all for his family, and here with your others. Es con gran amor me quisiera presentar al estudiante del año del escuelo Kelly a Gerson Alexander Enriquez Stio. A lo largo de su carrera, Gerson ha demostrado constantemente integridad, determinación, y respeto. La dedicación de Gerson al aprendizaje y su impulso para esforzarse al máximo es realmente inspirador. Ha demostrado cordializa para ser consciente de sí mismo y su aprendizaje, hacer preguntas, aclarar todas para ayudar a aquí a su profesión, utilizar recursos para poder decir su trabajo y reflexionar sobre su profesión. Aunque este ha sido un año expresante y suav, Gerson ha venido a las licencias todos los días invocada, hasta las ceremonias, con sus maestros y compañeros, ha sabido todo el conocimiento que puede y en.
Progress.
Y es sino a sus padres. No solo presionan todos los áreas, sino que también nuestra gracia. Mientras navegaba por nuevos sitios web, mostraba paciencia con la conexión a internet y cooperaba con sus compañeros de clase. Gerson, con tu corazón bondadoso, alma creativa y amor por el aprendizaje, sé que continuará su esfuerzo. Felicidad y lección es Gerson, nos da la estampa muy orgullosa.
Certificate student of the year of the Kelly Elementary School, so we are turning to 21. And a lot of things, ones and others, for your precious and dear guests. Congratulations, students of the year. We turn it around.
Hello, I'm the admiring principal of the Sakoloski School, and we're so proud to introduce our student of the year, Joshua Lon Juarez. And his teacher, Michaela Fairman, has some wonderful words to read about him.
Joshua is an incredibly hard worker in my class. I am so excited to say that he's the student of the year for the 2020-2021 school year. With all the challenges that students have faced this year, Joshua has demonstrated perseverance. He pushed through the obstacles of remote learning each and every day. He was always the first one to log on to Zoom in the morning with a smiling face. He would complete his work to the best of his ability and even go above and beyond. Whenever Joshua finished his work, he would check it over twice or even three times before submitting it. Joshua always shows respect towards his teachers, classmates, and mentors that he encounters. Not only is Joshua a hard worker on his own, but he's a student that is respectful, helpful, and caring towards classmates and peers. When working with partners or in a small group, Joshua is understanding and supportive. He thinks the best about everyone and knows that he can help them to be their personal best. Positive, intelligent, supportive, and family-granted, that is how I would describe Joshua. He handles every assignment with a cheerful demeanor and is always willing to add a little extra to his work to make it as best as possible. He is always willing to learn, and we all appreciate his enthusiasm first. Joshua gets right to work and puts in his best effort. He helps those around him and is a great leader in my class. Joshua takes pride in his achievements and happily shares them with his family. As we transitioned into in-person learning, Joshua's qualities were highlighted and emphasized even more. When working with his small group for regions research, Joshua was always patient and understanding. He often would write on a whiteboard to help his partners be able to take accurate notes that they found together in the text. If he saw that someone was stuck on a word, he would read the word aloud or even spell it so the student could type it on their Chromebook. And every block of the day, Joshua does his best work and helps others to reach their full potential too. I am incredibly proud of Joshua, and it has been a pleasure to be his fourth grade teacher. I admire him so much in all that he does for others as well as for himself. Joshua emulates what it needs to be a true friend and a determined student. I cannot express how happy I am that he was named student of the year. Congratulations to you, Joshua, and I hope that you never change your work. Your life will continue to shine through in all of your adventures. I am elated that I have this opportunity to honor you with this award and to have been your teacher for your last year at the Sakoloski School.
You're the official teacher award, and we're so proud of you.
Thank you.
You're all very proud, okay? Good job. Thanks, Natalie.
Hello, good evening. My name is Linda Barber, and I am principal of the Brown Middle School. It's my great pleasure tonight to present our student of the year, Brandon Rosa Barrientos. And I'd like to tell you some things about him before I present him with his award. Brandon has demonstrated immense growth during his time at the Brown, despite a very difficult year of online learning. He's an extremely motivated student who asks questions, advocates for himself, helps his classmates, and comes to class prepared and engaged. In the middle of this school year, he faced a difficult transition, moving from foundational hour classes to a traditional hour class in the middle of this year and in the middle of instructional units in many, many subject areas. In a few classes, he even switched teachers, and he did this without the support of his English language development teacher, Megan Mara Hilda, who was on maternity leave. He has fit seamlessly into his new class environment and emerged a leader in that classroom as well, while still maintaining relationships with students in his old home room. In both EMA and history, he was able to jump in mid-year. He took initiative to get caught up and produced stellar five-parAGRass essays in both classes. In math, Brandon has consistently pushed his whole class forward. He embraces challenges, explains his reasoning to others, and works diligently on problems. Brandon is also an amazing artist and challenges himself with new techniques and drawing subjects. Finally, Brandon was the only student at the Brown Middle School this year who transitioned between hour classrooms as a very big accomplishment during our time of remote learning. He is a pretty special and unique young man, and he deserves our student of the year award. And I should thank you, and I should give this award and the gift card for both of you.
Good evening. I'm Mike Tobin. I'm the principal of the Morris H. Segal Clark Avenue Middle School. We are so happy to announce our student of the year, teacher Sarah Ruth McCaskill, and her teacher, who's been fortunate enough to have her for the last two years, Ann Boyd is going to read a letter.
It is truly an honor to be able to present the Morris H. Segal Clark Avenue Middle School Student of the Year Award to Sarah Ruth McCaskill. I have had the distinct pleasure of being part of Sarah Ruth's educational journey. I know I can speak for all members of Clark Avenue when I say that Sarah has impressed us with her ability to work hard, grow as a learner, and encourage others. One of Sarah's most admirable qualities is her desire to help others. In fact, there has never been a time that Sarah Ruth was not willing to help another student. She will not only share her knowledge with classmates that genuinely cares about the student's understanding of the topic. Sarah makes sure that other students she is helping don't just get the correct answer, but takes the time to help students understand how to do the work that leads to the answer. She exemplifies leadership and has been the student that teachers turn to because we know she will be welcoming and helpful to all students. Sarah may not know this, but there have been many conversations amongst her teachers about what a great teacher she could be one day. Sarah Ruth is not only an extremely caring and generous student, she is driven and committed to her academia. she is driven and committed to her academia. She has achieved the great honor of earning Honorable every quarter of every year during her middle school career. There has never been a time that Sarah Ruth hasn't demonstrated her desire to learn. Her curiosity and growth mindset are characteristics that are truly a pleasure to have in the classroom. You will be hard-pressed to find Sarah Ruth without a look in her hands or in the queue of one of our online platforms. She is an avid reader who has definitely kept our librarian, Ms. Javier, busy with her book requests. Although Sarah clearly loves to read, she also has an exceptional desire for civvies. In her eighth-grade physics class, she has demonstrated a lot of excitement for being civically engaged in the Chelsea community. She is excited to apply her historical thinking skills to address issues around COVID and health in Chelsea community, going above and beyond by asking thoughtful questions and talking to multiple community members to gather information. We are so excited to see how she would use community research to implement and enforce action within her community. In addition to her stellar academic career, she is also well-known for her artistic abilities, specifically her still life drawings. Not only is she artistically talented, she often reveals us with her tales of her baking experiences that we all hope she will share with us one day. She has been a member of our theater group, here again, for continuously foster an inclusive learning environment for all diverse learning groups. Outside of her scholastic pursuits, Sarah Ruth is also an active member of her community as a whole. She is a youth leader at her church, has helped to run the nursery, and has been a junior counselor at a summer youth. It is without a doubt that Sarah Ruth deserves this honorable award. We are so proud of her, and we cannot wait to see what she does with her bright future. Congratulations.
So our Student of the Year this year is Aiman Savani. As far as the WSTA Wolf Pack goes, Aiman really needs no introduction. He has been with us since fifth grade, always smiling, always chatting with his teachers, and always being a good friend to his classmates. We're gonna really miss you in the office next year. This past year has been hard on all of us in a totally new way of teaching and learning, but Aiman's teachers have all been impressed with how much he has thrived. Over the summer, he was messaging Mr. Maldy and I, and we got the chance to go visit him during our sidewalk walk visits and even meet his little sister. Aiman never let the pandemic keep him connecting and doing his best. He came to remote learning with a smile and a willingness to engage. I can't tell him enough how much we will miss him, but know that he will be an amazing addition to Phoenix next year and wherever he goes. I still remember him like it was yesterday. He was part of a team of students who helped to plant new trees outside of our school, and he was so excited that the city not only listened to his letters, but responded. That tree now has strong roots here, and so does Aiman. We will miss him dearly, but know that he's gonna be great next week.
Hi, I'm Sarah Kent, I'm filling in for Principal Markel. This year's CHS Student of the Year is Richard Flores. In his time at CHS, Richard has accomplished a great many things. In addition to being president of the National Honor Society, Richard is the vice president of the senior class. He is also a multi-sport athlete and is currently maintaining a GPA of over 4.6. Wow. Richard is truly a well-rounded student who CHS is proud to call one of its own. Congratulations.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ron Schmidt, I'm the principal of Chelsea Opportunity Academy, representing our staff and introducing our Student of the Year. The student, Morris Tejada, came to us as an over-aged, under-credited student having dropped out of high school. He struggled early, often taking on the behaviors of younger students who struggling to stay focused at school. Getting him to come to school was a challenge. His work as a chef often went late into the night, and by the time he would get home, he was tired, knowing that the next day would be another workday when he woke up. The challenges he faced between schoolwork, learning to speak English, and outside competing priorities of school often left him frustrated and ready to give up. Relentless outreach efforts kept him in communication, and at times, that was all we could do. Then something happened. He started coming to school and doing work online. He could see the little efforts were adding up to getting work completed and completing courses. He found motivation and the desire to finish his work and fight for his diploma. His English skills reached new levels, and he found more confidence to practice. He fought through the struggles of geometry with relentless determination. He delivered one of the most inspirational senior capstone presentations we have ever observed. All of this while working full-time and supporting Ashley, his four-year-old daughter. He is truly a student who represents our core values, and that is why Morris Tejada was selected as the COA Student of the Year. Thank you.
That was awesome, Almy, thank you.
I think him.
I thank Veronica for organizing all of this.
Thanks Veronica for organizing and for everything else that you do.
Yes, we, round of applause, team, if you can unmute yourselves to thank Beta for that beautiful video. And all the work that you did.
Ricky Villalas from Chelsea Cable, who put it together for us as well. They really.
And Ricky thing too.
Too bad we couldn't meet them.
Team, I know that we all wish to have been there in person to congratulate every single student, retiree, and all of our wonderful supportive staff this year. But next year, hopefully, we will all be there this time in June, doing the same exact thing in person. So thank you again, Veronica. Team, before running or going on to our next agenda item, I'd like to comment to the record and to the public who are watching us at home that our chairman, Anna Hernandez, joined us. Committee, school board member Henry Wilson is with us, Marisol Santiago is also with us. And I believe that's it for the members who joined us a little late. And of course, our city councilor, Leo Robinson, again, thank you for joining us. And now I'll turn it back to Dr. Beta.
Great, so I am going to switch over to, oops, wrong one, stop sharing it. Let me, I'm just gonna switch over, I have a lot going on on my screen. Let's see if I can get it right. You would think I would be an expert at this by now, right? Okay, so as I have been here for over a year and a half now, and we have been in the middle of a pandemic, and my goal was to roll out a strategic plan that would carry us over into the next five years. So our current strategic plan is ending as of this year. And so I have been preparing a new five-year strategic plan, but the preparing for this strategic plan actually started during my entry plan. So during my entry plan, I interviewed many constituents, internal constituents, constituents from externally, community partners, teachers, people within the district central office, business office, buildings and grounds, paraprofessionals, administrators. So I've been gathering and collecting all this information, and then when we were doing the Student Opportunity Act, we collected a lot of survey data during those community conversations. We actually did it, asked strategic questions to help us inform the strategic plan as well. So the questions we asked, and you probably have heard me say this over and again, is what's working? What do we need to improve on, and where should we put our resources towards so we know where we're going in the next five years? Now, the purpose of a strategic plan is to give us a vision and give us guidance. It's not a catch-all where it has everything that we're doing in Chelsea Public Schools. It really is to keep us focused because we know that if we focus on several things, we can do those well and get those done, but it doesn't mean that we drop some of the work that we're already doing. And so this strategic plan really builds upon the plan from the previous year. And so what you'll see here is actually a continuation of the previous strategic plan and moving this to the next level. And our goal is to really improve teaching and learning, and as you can see here, for every student, every day. And so our shared values are our foundation. We have to have a foundation, and that foundation is in equity, instruction, and we put safety here in light of COVID-19. We want to make sure that our schools and work sites are safe and secure for students, parents, and staff. That was critical to this new strategic plan. And then we also put the support because we know, as a result of the pandemic, that student support would be so important, meaning social, emotional, and academic needs. And then the relationships are so critical to us. We will know our students by name, strength, and need. So those are our shared values, that's the foundation, if you will. If you're building a house, you have to build a solid foundation, this is our foundation. And our mission has not changed. Chelsea Public Schools is a gateway school system that welcomes and educates all students. And then our vision for Chelsea Public Schools is to provide every student with a high-quality education and a system that is devoted to equity, diversity, and social justice. Every student will have multiple learning opportunities to meet challenging standards in a safe, caring, and respectful environment. Every student will graduate college and career-ready. So that is our vision for every student in the Chelsea Public Schools. And then our theory of action is if we improve the quality of teaching and learning at every school, provide innovative and enriching programs, and recruit, support, and retain diverse teachers and leaders to stay in our systems, because that was something that we heard, I heard loud and clear from the time I interviewed for this position to the time that when we were listening, was that we need to recruit and support our teachers. And then number four, engage families as our partners and our coworker, and you can see that we've been doing that and focusing on that during this pandemic, and ensure efficient and effective operational systems. Then we will deliver the high-quality education of all students, to all students that our Chelsea students deserve and will empower, improve outcomes and access across the system for all students. And then every student will graduate from high school on a path to college and career. So here are some of our accomplishments that we are incredibly proud of. 62% of our students from the class of 2020 attended a four-year to two-year college. Last year, the class of 2020 received over $4.7 million in scholarship funds. We also offer funds for families in our inversement program, and we had 302 students from Chelsea High School participate in the early college program with Bunker Hill. So all of these students earned college credits. Our city has supported our partnership with Bunker Hill through the Bunker Hill Chelsea Scholarship. So last year, 23 students were awarded the City Bunker Hill Community College Scholarship. And then this year, we were featured during a pandemic from the Rini Center in the Conditions of Education Report for Engaging Community Voice. And we were awarded $600,000 for the DESI Diversification Pilot Grant. So we are proud of the work that we are doing in Chelsea Public Schools. We have also increased our diversity rates of teachers, administration, administrators, and principals. We have launched the Teacher Pathway Program, and we welcomed our largest cohort of 16 paraprofessionals and teachers on provisional licenses into our Teacher Pathway Program. So we're very excited about all that we're doing in Chelsea Public Schools, and we've already been aligning our goals to our mission and what we've been working on. So this is a nice graphic that organizes the priorities, the five priorities that you have heard me talk about in my entry plan, actually. And so this graphic kind of lays it out beautifully for all to see visually. One, rigorous and culturally relevant instruction for all students. We're gonna focus on increasing access to engaging and enriching opportunities for all. We're gonna focus on recruiting, supporting, and retaining high-quality teachers so that they stay in our, and leaders stay in our system. Then we want to engage our parents and community organizations in shared decision-making. And we want to ensure effective and efficient operation and state-of-the-art technology to support teaching and learning. So those are our key priorities, and this is what we heard from our community. So number one is ensuring rigorous and culturally relevant instruction for all students. So at the foundation is that every child deserves an excellent education, and we believe that. Each and every child has the potential to learn and grow at high levels and reach their full potential. And our ultimate outcome here is that every Chelsea Public School graduate will graduate college and career-ready. And then number two is we will increase access to engaging and enriching opportunities for all students. So every student needs access to engaging and enriching opportunities that will prepare them to succeed in college and career. And so our ultimate goal outcome is that schools will have expanded opportunities and partnerships with our community, employers, higher education organizations, and other organizations that enrich and expand learning beyond the classroom and create pathways to college and career success. So we really want to work on expanding opportunities for students. And then we want to retain diverse and high-quality teachers and leaders to stay and work in Chelsea Public Schools. And the foundation is that a diverse and high-skilled staff are critical to the success and well-being of our students. And our goal is that we will recruit and retain high-quality staff that reflect our students and are focused on serving our community. And then our fourth priority is to, and we really worked on this in the pandemic, is engage parents and community organizations in shared decision-making to improve teaching and learning. Because we believe that families and community members play a critical part of every great school district. We can't do this alone. And so our outcome is that Chelsea Public Schools will engage families in meaningful ways to improve instruction. And then our fifth priority is to ensure efficient and effective systems and operations to support instruction and student learning. And the foundation here is that adequate resources and efficient systems and processes are critical supports to ensuring that educators can teach and students can learn. And our goal is that if we have efficiencies and effectiveness in our operations to support our schools, then we will improve teaching and learning. And so there is our entire strategic plan with the five focus priority areas. This is where we're going, and there's a lot of work to be done. I want to thank everyone that participated in the process. We had a gap with COVID, but we were still working through that to prepare this strategic plan. And one of the reasons why we're. And one of the reasons why we're, I was wanting to get this out today is because over the summer, our school principals will be working on their whole school improvement plans. And we want to make sure that they incorporate the vision and the goals in their in whole school improvement plans so that we were aligned. And so um we I'm ending with the quote is that we are connected like family. Because in Chelsea Public Schools, we are like family. And our goal is to ensure, again, that our children, our students, receive the highest quality education possible. So I will stop here for questions. And I'm going to stop sharing so I can see everybody.
Can I jump in with a question? Okay. Hearing hearing no objections. Um, uh, thank you so much for that presentation. That was that was really, really great. Um, and, you know, uh, uh, one area that I think is of particular importance to to many of us, you know, is the family engagement portion. Um, and I and, you know, th- there might be kind of like a lot a bigger document with like more more stuff in it um about this that will probably get sent out. I just would like to hear more about how we're tracking parent and family engagement. Um, and, you know, how how we're kind of able to show, you know, that that what we're doing is working and that kind of thing. Um, and and, you know, I I wonder if in the same way that we get kind of monthly updates on like the academic me- metrics and that kind of thing, if there's any way that we can kind of incorporate that type of, um, you know, updates for us about that and just to so that we can kind of know how things are going. And if there's any ways that we can, you know, ask school committee members, help engage families, then then kind of jump in as well in that. Um, yeah.
That is such a great question, and and I want to thank you for that. So we have built out metrics for every component of the strategic plan. Uh, the metrics, we will report out quite frequently. Um, either it's going to be yearly report out, but then in 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 the future, in this school committee presentate uh presentation meeting tonight, you'll see Assistant Superintendent Ms. Kent always presents the indicators of success. Those are the metrics that were in the in our strategic plan right now. And so those metrics, the indicators of success, are going to probably, a lot of them will be the same, and some of them will be modified to align to this new strategic plan. And so what you see now as Ms. Kent presents the indicators of success in just a little bit, that is aligned to our current strategic plan and the metrics from our current strategic plan. And so we will continue that practice. But to answer your question about family and student, uh, family engagement in particular, we are looking at metrics for uh co-design tables, what we call co-design tables. And that was something that our Harvard intern started, I y'all, Dr. Burgeman. He has now graduated as Dr. Burgeman now. And that is co-crafting um family, community engagement with families. And so right now, we have about, we have eight co-design tables in the district at the different schools. And so we're continuing that work. And so one way we can measure that is family engagement is through those co-design tables at each school. Another way we have measured family engagement that um that we're going to measure is through our surveys. So before Dr. Burgeman came to us, we weren't reaching a lot of our families on the surveys. And he, his expertise as family was family is family, community engagement. And he said, you know, you guys really should use the phones as a way to reach families and text them surveys over their phones. And the minute we started doing that, we started getting over immediately like thousands of responses to our surveys, all in Spanish. And so that that's another measure that we're going to use to um to measure true authentic family and community engagement. Because just to say, oh, fifty people came to the bake sale, that that's not enough. It has to be tied to teaching and learning, and it has to be meaningful engagement. So we're looking out at metrics that that will really align to meaningful family engagement that flips the paradigm to where our families' voices are heard and that they have that voice. And and we're working with them, and that's why the co-design, the partnering is so powerful. And so I can, I can send you um some sample metrics that we're we're looking at for using that for that measuring that priority.
That'd be great. Yeah, thank you so much. Um, yeah, like, you know, and this might be just like a crazy idea. Like, I just, I I wish there were like a way of, you know, kind of working up to like a goal of like a hundred percent of parents have engaged in like at least like one way or so- something like that, you know, but it's kind of like, you know, we we've reached every parent, something, you know, that that's kind of like a crazy, you know, goal that, you know, we we hope to reach one day. I I don't know, just kind of throwing that out there. Um, y- y'all know more about this than I do, I'm just.
What's been amazing this year as a pandemic year, and and especially as teaching and learning happened inside the living rooms and inside the home. So there was more family engagement this year than we've ever had. And our principals had said the one thing they want to keep, and then we talk about silver linings, is the Zoom family engagement piece of the work because they have gotten such a response from our families. And so there's uh many silver linings that we plan on keeping.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Are there any other questions from our team? Alrighty. I just, I don't have a question, I have more of a comment. Um, Dr. Beta and Central Office Team, I want to thank you for your efforts in increasing teacher diversity over the last six to seven years that I've had the privilege of serving on this school board. I have advocated for that since day one because it came, it comes from the students, right? Students are the ones who are asking for more representation in in front of their classrooms. And I am proud to say that Chelsea is a district that we listen, we see, and we hear our students. Um, big shout out to Erin Jen, Dr. Erin Jennings, who also includes student voice in everything that he does for our district, so thank you for that. Um, alright, with that, uh, we, let's move right along to the next agenda item.
Great, and I I'm I'm great, I'm grateful that this is um fitting right into our uh student achievement indicators of success. So here are our, how, here's how we track our progress with our current strategic plan. And so I will have Ms. Kent do the indicators of success. And before she does, though, I just want to say, Sarah, we're going to miss you. This is your last presentation to school committee. Um, and I just want to thank you publicly for your hard work and uh years and dedication and service to Chelsea Public Schools, and thank you. And so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kent, who's going to go over our in- indicators for one last time.
Ooh. Okay, um, tonight, we don't have many. Um, we only have the monthly ones um and the mobility um appendix. So we're going to start on page three, which is attendance. Um, I'm going to be comparing what we have today here um to two years ago, because as you know, a year ago, we were busy with the pandemic. Um, and it wasn't going so well. So um, you can see here in the year-to-date column that we are actually hitting our goal of ninety-five percent attendance in both third and fourth grade. Um, and we are very close in second grade. Actually, pre-K through grade eight, we are over ninety percent, which is really, really applaudable. Um, and this, just to remind you, this does include students that are both in-person and remote at this point. Um, in the high school, grades nine through twelve, as you could can see in the chart, as children ga- get older, it's a little harder to engage them. Um, but we are working hard continually to do that. So overall, you can see down here, right, yeah, now, year-to-date, we're at about ninety-one percent attendance. And that's about two percent lower than two years ago at this time, pre-pandemic. Um, so last, at this time, two years ago, we were at ninety-two point eight. And so this represents a ton of work and outreach. Um, as you all know, it's been really tough um during the pandemic. And having a district attendance rate at about ninety-one percent is really laudable, although we're always trying to do better. If you turn to page six, let me scroll and try not to make you seasick. Um, our dropouts. You'll see that this year, to date, we have had forty-four dropouts, um, which is two point eight two percent. And I'm happy to report that only one, we've only had one dropout this month. Um, and just for comparison, just so that you have some some um thing to benchmark against, two years ago, in May, we had ninety-nine. So we're at about half of what we were before. And our percentage here was about seven. So we have done really well with dropouts. It had, has had something to do with the fact that they can take their Chromebooks with them wherever they go. Um, but it is, it is really a great thing to see that our kids are still engaged. So the details, um, I know it's a little strange, but that one student who dropped out this past month um was an eleventh-grade uh English language learner. Uh, but the good news is that the student just enrolled in the Adult Ed program. So they might have dropped out of traditional high school, but they have enrolled in the Adult Ed. And if we go to page nine, which is the mobility, which will be the last indicator for tonight, you will see that we have had a little uptick, and we've been hearing about this change. Um, we've had about seventeen more kids come in than go out this month. Um, and most of those, as you can see from the numbers, are at the high school. The high school has gained fourteen children um in in their grade band. So overall, we have had about one thousand twenty-five kids come or go this year, um, which is about three hundred less than two years ago at this time. And you'll see that our overall mobility rate is down here, seventeen point two seven. And two years ago, we were at twenty-two, so it's about five percent less. I'd be happy to answer any questions um that you may have.
I don't have a question, Sarah, but I want to thank you so much for all that you present to us every meeting.
Well, thank you.
I I really appreciate seeing the numbers and everything, and I know you work hard to get the information together for us. I want to thank you so much, and I know I miss you very much.
I'll miss you too.
Yeah, I don't have a question, just uh, just a congratulations on having done your final uh indicators of success report to us.
Yeah, well, there's a, you'll see, you know, in September, these last columns will be filled for you um before this is revamped for the new strategic plan, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Uh, we will miss you, and congratulations on your last indicator of success.
Chair, by me, before we move on?
Yes.
No, I just want to say, I know Ms. Kent from before our school committee days, and my son just heard that it was.
Thanks for teaching me math.
Yeah, that was my twenty-one-year-old uh who still remembers Ms. Kent. And I appreciate everything, everything you've done for our district as a teacher, being part of that project challenge, dealing with my son.
Hey, that movie's making me feel old.
I love how good the guy feel. Um, but I just want to say that I miss the Kelly School Days when we prepared these delicious lunches for you guys. And I always love you came down so happy, and you were always making sure you had a goodie bag to take home.
Yeah, because you had to stay married.
Um, because you guys really appreciate it, so thank you, thank you, and I wish you a lot of success. Um, when I heard the news, I was kind of like, oh, man, because like I said, we go more than just school committee working together. I just, as a parent, I appreciate everything that you've done for our students. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Villas. Are there any other comments for our wonderful Ms. Kent before we head on to the next agenda item?
I want to say something, Ms. Kent. For a short time, I've known you, Sarah, I want to appreciate you uh let you know how how awesome you are. My energy, the the creativity, uh, all the school events that I've been a part of, you've been there. You you really brought it home to Chelsea, and even though you leave in um the building, you still a part of Chelsea. And I really want to applaud you for everything you've done, everything you've done for the students and the families, you have the great city of Chelsea. Good luck.
Okay, you're making me lose it now. Thank you, I appreciate it all.
Yeah, Ms. Garcia, I'd like to just add, uh, Ms. Kent, um, you know, I've, I haven't been on the school committee as long as some other folks, but I certainly want to acknowledge your dedicated work. Um, I can't imagine, I think my memory of at least like witnessing what we did in the school, um, I I just think about like the standards that we set collectively as a district and how you've helped shape a lot of that. Um, and, you know, this is one of the segments that, you know, clearly I've always enjoyed really understanding how we're doing. So thank you for your care for our students, thank you for supporting the staff, and thank you for the leadership. I I think there's a lot that you've given us um that I hope in the future, we can continue to honor that work um and continue to cultivate, you know, those good roots that that you've implemented through these systems. Um, so lots of gratitude and big hugs uh and appreciations as well.
Ms. Kent, sending you a large hug. Uh, Ms. Alfredo posted in the chat, mil gracias. Awesome team, Dr. Beta, turn it over to you to finish your report.
Great, um, well, I do not have a COVID nineteen update except for that we are in school and our kids are extremely happy to be back in school. So it's exciting to be able to end the school year with many of our students um getting to have that closure this year. Um, I don't know if our student representative is here today, I don't think I see him. He actually was our the student um of the year for the Chelsea High School. So uh, but I don't think he's here tonight, but we just want to congratulate him on his award. Um, so we'll go straight to the personnel update, so let me um share my screen again. Oops. See if I can get out of here. Okay. And closures, so I'm going to go straight to the personnel report. I don't want to make you guys dizzy with this. Okay. So here is our, oh, I went up too fast. So here is our personnel report um as of May fourth. So you can see here, um, all of our new hires, we've been hiring as much as possible now that it's the end of year for the following year. Our demographic data of hiring is fifty-eight percent Caucasian, forty-two percent Hispanic, zero percent Black, zero percent Asian Pacific Islander. And then you can see all of our resignations, retirements, interminations, um, several of them that we honored tonight. And then our promotion and transfers and needs of absences. And so that is our personnel report, and then I'll move on to our enrollment report. You can see here, our enrollment wa- is now at six thousand twenty-one. And as Ms. Kent spoke about, we gained uh most of our students in the high school. So we are up, according to this, twenty-one students um from the last report. And as we, we're noticing that there, uh, the students are coming in middle and high school. So I would like to commend these reports to uh the report.
Awesome, thank you, Dr. Beta.
You are welcome.
Do I have a motion to commend to the report, the committee reports?
Motion to commend the reports to the record.
Second.
The motion.
Awesome team. Moving right along to our agenda. Awesome, thank you so much, Dr. Beta, for providing all of this information for the last time this year um as we wrap up our last school. Um as we wrap up our last school committee meeting. Alrighty, team. We do not have any unfinished business, so we are moving right along to new business. Consideration and action to adopt the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two for hourly positions and salaried positions. Explanation: Each year, the school committee reviews and approves the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for hourly positions and salaried positions. This year, proposed changes include increasing several hourly positions to acknowledge the scheduled increase in Massachusetts' minimum wage to fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents, which will occur in January twenty twenty-one, and increasing the daily rate for some substitute positions. In addition, the changes will add several new position titles and increasing some ranges for salaried positions to provide the superintendent with capacity to acknowledge performance and/or educational attainment. Roll call, please, Veronica.
Consideration and action to adopt the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two for hourly positions and salaried positions. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Villas?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative motion passes. Next, we have consideration and action to accept fifty thousand dollars in grant funding from the Chelsea Education Fund Foundation for the REACH Program during school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Explanation: The Chelsea Education Foundation has received fifty thousand dollars in funds in support of the REACH Program. These funds can be used for the cost of staff, professional development, grant-specific school activities, supplies, materials, and transportation. Massachusetts General Law's chapter seventy-one, section thirty-seven A provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
Consideration and action to accept fifty thousand dollars in grant funding from the Chelsea Education Foundation for the REACH Program during school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Santiago?
I am so happy to vote yes, um and I hope that we will support our kids and our staff at the REACH Program, yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Villas?
Yes.
It's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to accept a gift of two thousand dollars, two hundred, sorry, two thousand two hundred dollars from the Hildreth Stewart Foundation for the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. The explanation: The Hildreth Stewart Foundation has graciously donated two thousand two hundred dollars to support the graduation dinner for twenty twenty-one graduates of the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. The funds will be used for a celebratory event for students graduating this year. Massachusetts General Law's chapter twenty-one, section thirty-seven A provides for the acceptance of gifts for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee.
Roll call. Consideration. To accept the gift of two thousand two hundred from the Hildreth Stewart Foundation from the Chelsea, for the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle? Ms. Carlo?
Yes.
Ms. Villas?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of up to sixty-five thousand dollars to move funds from other instructional services to facilities and transportation and/or information technology for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Explanation: Schools and departments have been very diligent this year in monitoring their budgets and utilizing the funds available to benefit students. At present, a very small amount remains uncommitted in the other instructional programs. It is recommended that those funds be transferred to facilities and transportation and/or information technology for a few remaining projects and expenditures.
Roll call, please. Consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of up to sixty-five thousand dollars to move funds from other instructional services to facilitate and to facilities and transportation and/or information technology for FY twenty twenty-one. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Villas?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative motion carries. For the next agenda item, I will read the consideration and action and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Beta to introduce our new assistant superintendent. And then we can cast our roll call vote. Consideration and action to move to accept the terms and conditions in the employment contract for assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, Michael Lavato. Dr. Beta, I'll turn it over to you.
Stop sharing so that way we can, we can all see each other. Um so tonight, I am recommending to the school committee to appoint uh Mr. Michael Lavato to the new, up to the job of assistant superintendent for teaching and learning. And before I do, I would like to thank everyone who served on the interview committee. Uh there was a, a pretty large interview committee that consisted of teachers and some central office coordinators and administrators. Um and so, uh Mike, I, I will embarrass you a little bit, but the committee, it was uh you were a far standout, and so um we're just so excited to welcome you. But I do wanna thank the committee, um I wanna thank HR Christine Lee for her work and just spearheading all of this. And um so it's, it's been a long process, and uh I just, I just wanna thank everyone who participated in the process. So this is, I am recommending Mr. Michael Lavato to this superintendent uh job for teaching and learning. And I recommend him along with the interview, all the people who participated in the interview process. So I am proud to recommend him, and I'm gonna read his bio to you now. Um so Mr. Michael P. Lavato brings over nineteen years of educational experience to the assistant superintendent role in Chelsea. He grew up in Las Vegas, New Mexico. He is a proud product of public schools that prepared him to become a first-generation college graduate. He is currently working as the Director of Special Education for the Lowell Public Schools. During this time, he has successfully led the Special Education Department through the pandemic while increasing graduation rates by fourteen percent for students with special education needs. Providing support to twenty-eight schools to effectively provide academic and social emotional support while maintaining all compliance indicators. Mr. Lavato began his professional career as a behavioral support teacher with the Santa Fe Public Schools, serving students identified as in need of special education support. He was promoted within the district and began his administrative career as a high school assistant principal, where he led the Special Education Department successfully to achieve overall academic gains, increased graduation rates, reduce discipline and compliance in special education. Mr. Lavato has also served as an associate superintendent in charge of curriculum and federal programs where he was successful in leading change that resulted in academic gains across the district and improved graduation rates. During this time, he led the district to remove all state corrective action plans in the areas of special education, Title One, and the bilingual department in less than a year. Additionally, Mr. Lavato's experience includes serving as the New Mexico State Director of Special Education and the Questa Independent School Superintendent. He has also served in the armed forces, where he received an honorable discharge for thirteen years of service. He believes that every student can succeed and that all staff have a responsibility to provide an adequate education to every student. Miss, we are honored to um have you join us, Mr. Lavato. Um would you like to say a few words?
Uh thank you, Dr. Beta, and uh thank you, school committee members, for having me present. Um I would just like to say, Dr. Beta, I'm honored, I'm privileged, and I, I can't wait to get started. Well, I first, uh couldn't come soon enough. Um I can't wait to start learning from the community and uh to be embedded into the community and uh get started. So thank you, guys. I really appreciate the opportunity, and I look forward to learning from each and every one of you. Thank you.
Welcome to the team, Mr. Lavato. Alright, team, with that, let's kick it to the end. Are there any comments? Sorry, any comments before our roll call vote? Alright, team. Oh, Ms. Santiago, I see your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to say welcome as well, and thank you for um considering and, and having like, you know, been part of this process and joining our school district. Um really impressive bio, and also uh really wonderful to hear your background and, and you know, what brings you into uh, had an opportunity to read a little bit on your, your bio. And uh really appreciated hearing at the end, uh you know, prioritizing stakeholders as I, you know, every member of this uh district does, you know, clearly, but just really wanna thank you for also, you know, saying yes and, and bringing your expertise to our district, so congratulations. Thank you for, and thank you, Christine, and, and Almi again for just, you know, uh having a great process and yeah, to have someone join the team. Thank you.
Can I, I could be, just add um something, uh I, I know, and then this yeah, also, and you know, uh Dr. Beta and I, we're, we're talking um at the Memorial Day celebration that we had earlier um this weekend. You know, one of the things that I, that I, that I was mentioning is that, you know, when, whenever somebody leaves a team, right? You know, especially someone who has, you know, been here for, for so long and has done so much great work, as Sarah, right? Whenever somebody steps away, right, I, I always see it as an opportunity to bring somebody, not to fill that hole, but to, you know, really like come and show like what their strengths are, so you know, I, I, you know, we, we, we won't be, we're not looking to fill Sarah's, you know, shoes, right? We're, we're looking to, to bring, to bring someone along, will, will be able to bring a whole new perspective, right, and, and um so I'm, I'm just really, really excited, um you know, and, and just to make sure that, you know, we're, we're, we um yeah, uh we're, I'm just really excited to, to have you on board, and um yeah, just, just ready to, to get to it. And uh Sarah, we will really, really miss you. Um yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Again, bienvenidos a Chelsea, and welcome to the team, Mr. Lavato. Alright, Veronica, now let's get this roll call on.
Consideration and action to move to accept the terms and conditions in the employment contract for assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, Michael Lavato. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Villas?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to move to authorize the, the district to continue with the planning and implementation of the Chelsea Virtual School for school year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Explanation: The district will continue with the planning implementation of the Chelsea Virtual School with guidance and DESI approval. Roll call, please.
Uh forgive me, team, and Ms. Garcia, Chairwoman and um Veronica. Um would it be, Almi, is it okay to ask a quick question before I move on to a vote? It's a brief question.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Santiago.
Thank you. So I've been following a lot, and I, I don't know, I think some of us, some of the school committee members have been following the news from the state. Um again, just really applauding your leadership, Almi, um and the team here for really highlighting what's worked well during the pandemic. In particular, um the successful ways that virtual learning has really allowed our students to have a, a space where that instruction doesn't get interrupted as best as possible. And I feel like, you know, from my personal perspective, um I just really have been struggling clearly with DESI. Um and I think that uh, you know, I've been following some, some conversations around whether virtual learnings would be approved for next year or not. Um and again, just feeling sort of conflicted because it has been successful for us, and I know that things are changing. And I think the district has done a diligent and outstanding job at following the numbers and science and data to make sure that our students are safe. Um so with all that said, granted that, you know, there, things are, are, could be looking different come September. I still wanted to hear like what, if you don't mind sharing out, like what's been your experience with, you know, what you're hearing around the possibilities of keeping virtual schools open? And is this something that, you know, we as school committee members can help advocate for? Um clearly, when the time feels appropriate, but I just wanna make sure that we're protecting what we know um works well for our students here in Chelsea. And you know, when the time comes, if, if things shift, you know, what you're hearing from DESI, you know, even as you're submitting this plan. I'm just hearing conflicting things uh about it.
Well, thank you so much for the question. Um we did submit our application in a fast fury, and knowing that we would probably, we'd have to work really hard uh between now and the summer to get it off the ground with all the details that it entails. So uh we, we have some work in front of us. So as, as soon as this is approved, which I hope it will be, then our goal is to, to post uh principal uh posting for this school, so that way that person can really spearhead this work and puts a lot more details in our application to DESI. And so we will be receiving a lot of feedback from DESI, and I know that it's going to be a lot and a heavy lift. Um but we are very serious about this. We wanna make this work out for our community. Um we know right now that um about forty-five percent of our families are still in person. I mean, still learning remotely and not in person, so again, forty-five percent. I don't know how, how people are going to feel when the fall rolls around. So the purpose of our virtual school is two-pronged. One is to really um meet the needs of our families who still may, may not feel comfortable in the fall in a couple of months. And, and it'll probably be smaller than what we have right now. We did do a survey, and we have about thirty-five percent who said they would still be interested in um learning remotely. Um again, things could change over the summer, I don't know. Um but even if there were ten percent, we would wanna have a virtual school option. I, I also see this as an opportunity to, to be very creative, to individualize instruction for our students. And I think that's a wonderful opportunity. Uh we have opportunity with a virtual school to use the virtual school for accelerated learning, for credit recovery, for students who are homebound, who need tutoring, maybe a, a student who's pregnant, students who um suffer with social anxieties. And what we found is that many of our students who were uh learning remotely engaged. And, and they loved it, and of course, some students didn't. So uh our, my goal right now is really, it's, it's, it's a two-pronged approach. Um I would, I would imagine that in the fall, we're still gonna have families that are a little hesitant. So that's part of the reason why we hurried up and put something together. We realize, and, and I have been very clear with DESI, that our application has a lot of work yet. We still have to flesh it out and put a lot of meat on the bones, if you will, and we are committed to doing that. So after this meeting, we'd like to be able to, like as you, if you wrote, yes, and we like, will move forward with posting. posting a principalship position for the school, so that we we can continue to put some more meat to our school and really the details. But in reality, we've been doing virtual school for fifteen months now. And so, we're excited about the possibilities, but we also think it is the right choice for our our community right now.
Yeah, and I certainly agree. Uh, I think that having choices, grateful that we have C O A, that we also have um, you know, other programs in in the city that have, you know, offered alternatives and additional supports in in different creative spaces, and virtual is definitely one of them. And clearly, I think, you know, from my personal perspective, I think that if we're seeing some success and and thinking about what's to come for the future, like, making sure that we're stabilizing, you know, students' experience, learning, in any way possible. I'm just so really grateful, Almi, that um, you've been just really holding that um, in such a way where, again, I will say obnoxiously it might sound, but like, I really feel that Chelsea has just been really leading the way in a lot of different areas um, that I'm just really proud and and really grateful to you for. So, if the, when the time comes that we need to advocate, um, please let us know. And if there's something that we could do to support our students and our student voices as well in the process, please let us know. And thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Garcia, can I help on?
Go ahead, Mr. Jimenez.
Yeah, so, um, I I am also very frustrated with with DSC, yes, as been noted many meetings. Um, you know, in my opinion, we shouldn't be creating a whole new school for a situation that might be temporary, right? And and it really, you know, this probably wouldn't be a priority if we could just continue with online learning in the schools that we currently have. Um, so, you know, I'm supportive of the of of, you know, I'll be, I'll be voting in favor of it, because it really feels like it's the only way forward because of the regulation that DSC has has created. Um, but I just have a couple of questions around, you know, how this might work kind of in conjunction with the, you know, in-person schools, um, and and kind of the full in-person that we're gonna have um, in in our in our other schools. Um, especially around, you know, what happens if somebody changes their mind um, halfway through the semester, after the first semester? Um, after the year, you know, like, like, is the is the spot that they previously had at another school saved for them? Do they give that up? Um, if if somebody, um, if somebody say is participating right now in the Camino's program, are they able to stay in that? Um, or do they have to leave it? And then if they come back, do they have to kind of go back into the into the lottery? Um, I'm just curious around how all these pieces kind of fit together.
We, we haven't quite fleshed everything out, but what I will say is that the school is its own school. It will have its own code. So, when someone signs up to be in the virtual school, to us, that's like a permanent placement for the year. Now, if they decide to transfer over, they they, if, um, they will lose their seat at the current school that they're in. But if they decide that, you know, after, let's say, the first nine weeks, it's not working out for them or whatever, and they want to go back to in-person learning, there has to be uh, break uh, breaking points that makes sense, right? And we do that right now for our remote learners, and we look at it by a case by, case-by-case basis. So, uh, a possible breaking point, which would make sense to transfer over, would it's, let's say, the winter break. And it's like, okay, so you need to switch over, it's not working for you. We take it by case-by-case basis, and we say, okay, um, you're, it's close to winter break, let's have that break at a time where there is a natural break. Because we can't have flipping and flopping all the time, because that creates discontinuity for students and for teachers. So, we we have to outline that, but that's exactly what we've been doing in remote learning right now. And we've had parents who have said, well, we want our kids to be able to be in person. We've changed our mind, or vice versa. We we look for a good breaking point, say, okay, we have, first of all, we have to have space. Second, when is there a natural break for us to do this, and what's gonna make sense? So, we we look at everything, so that's what I'll tell you right now.
So, then just, I guess, a follow-up on that. Let's say that, like, we're at capacity in all the, you know, in-person um, facilities, and somebody comes and they want to join a classroom in one of those schools, would they be able to?
At, coming from a virtual school to in-person?
Like, uh, like somebody who's brand-new to Chelsea, um, right, because, you know, it, this gives us more capacity, right? But then we also have the capacity of the buildings, right? Whereas this one kind of has more flexible capacity. So, I'm just curious how that would play in.
I think that, again, what I will say is that it's also gonna be dependent on how we negotiate um, with our teachers' union, because there's gonna be, they're also looking at class sizes for virtual schools as, the virtual school as well. So, a lot of this will have to be a sidebar M L U with our teachers' union on class size, just kind of like we've done right now in remote learning. We we had, we bargained, and we worked through with our union class sizes for our online learning academy. And so, it's the, it'll be the same process.
Yeah, just, I just, I I guess just want to be very careful about, like, messaging to parents who might want to choose this option about what they might be giving up, like, giving up a position, giving up, you know, um, yeah.
And those are all the things that normally would happen when when I, in the previous years, when I have started schools in the past. I I hire a principal. Normally, you get a good six months where you hire the principal, who's really gonna be the uh, founder of the school. And then he or she starts to create all those documents and information and communication, sets all those policies and procedures, and so that we we have that. So, as soon as we can, we will hire a principal, someone who who has the skillset to get this off the ground, and we can work on communicating and actual hard copy documents, information, and flesh it out. So, um, it's critical that um, that we hire someone who has this expertise and who can really lift and get this off the ground for us. I'm not expecting um, cabinet members to to start the school single hand, you know, single-handedly. We really need to have someone who can dedicate, be dedicated full-time to getting this off the ground.
Definitely. Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't, and just a a last note, and I know we have to move with the agenda, Kelly, thank you. Um, but, you know, this is, I also just echoing Almi, what you said about, you know, giving this an opportunity to actually breathe some, you know, have some breath to take shape and and sort of get into the structures of what it could look like, um, once you hire, you know, a principal and the person that you see fit. Um, I also just commend staff, you know, especially the shout-out to the Parent Information Center. Um, and the way the team there and, you know, everybody in the district has come together around transportation too. Um, because, you know, the more we shift around whether, you know, our student can be in remote versus in-person, you know, and being able to go back to bus routes and, you know, our budget and all of that, you know, everything is sort of, you know, connects with the other. So, you know, I really, I think, you know, we we've learned a ton this year. I think we're gonna continue to learn, you know, about what's possible. Um, but I'm just really excited that we have the opportunity to even keep this um, available for our students in the districts and, you know, same again, you know, as we continue to go forward, you know, what are, what are some of the things that we see most impacted because of the pandemic that we can just say, hey, you know, we learned a lot from this, and let's just really put that in the forefront, you know, as the the planning and the shaping takes place. Um, it's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jimenez and Ms. Santiago, for those great questions about our virtual school. Alrighty, Edonica, let's please have a vocal.
Consideration and action to move to authorize the district to continue with the planning and implementation of the Chelsea School, Chelsea Virtual School for school year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Car, um, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative emotion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to accept proposed changes to the middle school and high school handbook for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Explanation: The middle school and high school terms have worked, sorry, teams have worked diligently to gain consensus on updating language in their respective handbooks to reflect a collective desire to increase their focus on restorative justice and improve their ability to incorporate a more culturally responsive mindset. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to accept proposed changes to the middle school and high school handbook for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's nine in the affirmative.
Nine in the affirmative motion carries. Next up, we have consideration and action to accept the resolution celebrating Juneteenth in Chelsea Public Schools. Explanation: The Chelsea School Committee recognizes the historical significance of Juneteenth and supports the continued celebration in our community. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to accept the resolution celebrating Juneteenth in the Chelsea Public Schools. Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's nine in the affirmative.
Um, excuse me, Ms. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Santiago.
Alright, thank you. Um, so, I just wanted to ask if we could, for the community, just honor the the school committee member that might have presented this res- resolution for a vote tonight. Um, I just think it's important to acknowledge the leadership um, that brought this resolution, you know, to this meeting and for allowing us to actually vote in favor of it. I'm really moved. Um, but currently, as our process states, right, we usually list on the agenda the school committee member that proposes a resolution. It's wonderful and it's great, but I just want to acknowledge that leadership uh, tonight as well for bringing it forward.
Sure. And um, I'll I'll actually ask the school committee member who added this wonderful resolution to our agenda to read the resolution for tonight's meeting.
Okay. Resolution celebrating Juneteenth in Chelsea Public Schools. Whereas, Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, Black Independence Day, or Jubilee Day, is one of the oldest holidays commemorating the end of slavery in the United States of America. Whereas, on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Major General Gordon Granger brought the Union soldiers to Galveston, Texas, and announced that the Civil War had ended, rejoicing that enslaved African-Americans were free. And whereas, although the Emancipation Proclamation came over two years earlier, on January first, eighteen sixty-three, many oppressors continued to hold enslaved people captive despite the proclamation. And whereas, Juneteenth became a day of freedom, resilience, black excellence, and strength for black Americans, and remained an example for all Americans, regardless of background, religion, or race. And whereas, this year, Chelsea Public Schools joined the city of Chelsea and the Chelsea black community in celebration as we recognize Juneteenth Day on Friday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Chelsea School Committee, the Chelsea and the Chelsea Public Schools hereby recognizes that this historical significance of Juneteenth. Support the continued celebration to provide the opportunity for the Chelsea Public Schools community to learn from our past and encourage respect for all for all cultures. And witness where are we, the members of the Chelsea School Committee, have here unto set our hands this third day of June, twenty twenty-one. That's the resolution that uh, I wanted to share with the community on behalf of the school committee, if I could. And also, uh, there's a lot of uh, events going on throughout the community. Uh, there's one on the nineteenth, which is Saturday with the uh, prosperous organization here in the city, who does a lot of community events on Women's Ministry. And also, on the eighteenth, the Chelsea Black Community Organization is having a event, also City Hall, uh, between eleven to two. Um, this is the first year that our city, as well as business owners throughout the city, throughout the state, are recognized in Juneteenth Day. So, I think it's um, a great event. I think it's 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 a great time for our country and as well as for our community to um, be a part of this wonderful event and to uh, reflect on the memories, reflect on um, what happened and and how our country has changed and needs more improvement. But at the same time, we should be aware of our history and to uh, let more people know what happened on Juneteenth and what it really means. So, I encourage um, my colleagues and everyone who's watching and listening to us to come out and be a part of the events on the eighteenth. Uh, City Hall, come out on the nineteenth on Juneteenth itself, the day that we celebrate uh, Women's Ministry, I believe it's the same time, eleven to two, um, for great events and a lot of information. So, thank you. That's it?
Thank you so much, Mr. Wilson, for bringing this forward. I'd also like to share, last year, we added this to our academic calendar as well, thanks to Dr. Abeta. Um, so, it is, it is a great honor for us to continue supporting holidays like this. Um, so, thank you again for bringing this resolution forward. Mr. Jimenez, do you have a comment? Is all your hand raised?
Yeah, I just just wanted to, you know, thank Mr. Wilson uh, for for bringing this forward and the committee for voting in favor of it. You know, I I think it's it's super important that we highlight the the, continue to, you know, highlight this and and other um, you know, uh, commemorations, celebrations, right, that that um, have to do with the the lost, kind of, you know, not highlighted uh, enough history of the of the black uh, community in in this country. You know, and and also thinking about that earlier this week, right, was the commemoration of the hundredth anniversary of the Tulsa Massacre. Right, there are just so many things that, um, you know, so many people talking about how they never learned about this in school, even though, you know, it was the largest uh, massacre um, of of black uh, Americans in this country's history. And um, and I think it's it's really important that that we continue to find ways to to find this history, make sure that we, you know, we know it, make sure that we highlight it for our students to also know it. Uh, so, thank you. Thank you all so much for for supporting this and Mr. Wilson for bringing it up.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Jimenez. Mr. Wilson, you started off with our, of few announcements of community events. Uh, so, thank you for starting us off with that.
Absolutely.
I'll now ask the school committee members, is there any other announcements or closing statements that they'd like to share as we wrap up our uh, school committee meeting of this school year?
Well, there is uh, another event going on today, uh, I think this weekend, next week, at Market Basket in Chelsea, in other locations. The governor is uh, was in town yesterday, the Chelsea uh, Market Basket, and the program is fascinating, uh, residential. People go to those, uh, go to Market Basket, you get a free twenty-five-dollar Market Basket gift card. So, this weekend and next weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I believe Sunday, uh, you go to Market Basket. I would think it's like eleven to four to seven, something like that. I think the time, I'm not really sure on the time, but it's late afternoon, so you you can't say because of work or because of school, you can't make it. But uh, go there to Market Basket in Chelsea, see the big bus, nice-looking bus, could be used at also throughout the city uh, on the weekends, at different locations, and get fascinated. I believe it's just a Pfizer um, shop they may give you. But if you want the Johnson and Johnson, you can always go to the Chelsea Service, Chelsea, Chelsea, the Chelsea Senior Center uh, uh, on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays. Uh, Friday, we're there from four to seven, and Saturday and Sunday, we're there from ten to five. So, if you want the Johnson and Johnson or the Pfizer, we have it there. Uh, stop and shop, I mean, Chelsea Market Basket, I believe that having just the Pfizer, not to cheer up, if they have the Johnson and Johnson, but it's it's a good program, good way to go shopping and get a little shot at the same time. So, that's it for me.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
We have a couple of-
Ms. Carlyle, go ahead.
Um, on the twelfth and the thirteenth, a special day in the city of Chelsea for the seniors graduating this year. I know you went through a difficult year. I know you went through a difficult year and I'm very proud that you were gonna be getting your diplomas. Just remember where you came from, Chelsea, Massachusetts. Remember where you got your education at Chelsea High School. Congratulations to all of you.
Ms. Garcia, may I?
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Santiago.
Thank you. Um, I as well want to just congratulate all the students um, for their hard work in a very difficult year. Um, I want to recognize that there are still many people in the community experiencing tremendous grief, tremendous sorrow, tremendous loss. And um, we really want to remind us that as we reiterated throughout this pandemic every single month, that we're here as a community to support each other. Um, you know, to ask for what you need and, you know, that goes to staff, that goes to, you know, I think even here to each other, uh, supporting Almi, um, and, you know, the cabinet team. Um, I'm just really want to thank you all for, you know, us being able to come together throughout this year. Uh, um, and really tackle some difficult things before us. Um, that doesn't stop, I think, education is, as we all know, one of the most important things that we have in life, um, no matter what it looks like. Um, so I'm really proud of the students that are finishing their year. Uh, in particular to the little ones like my daughter, who uh, Mr. Delaney is leaving Berkeley. Um, and, you know, there's so many students that are transitioning to middle school. Uh, there's so many students that are transitioning to high school. Um, so just lots of uh, best wishes for a great summer. Um, and yes, thank you to, to all the staff that make, that, that helped make this year possible in, in this fashion. So I'm just hoping everybody gets a good break as well. Um, and, and to be with your loved ones because when we're, we're strong, our, our students are stronger. So, thank you all so much. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Mr. Jimenez, go ahead.
One last thing. I just want to wish a happy pride to all of our students, staff and residents who are members of the LGBTQ community. There's also um, a Chelsea, uh, the Chelsea LGBTQ Coalition is doing the fifth annual Chelsea Pride Celebration tomorrow, June fourth, um, at, let me see, six-thirty in Chelsea Square. So um, if you would like to join, um, I'm not sure if I'll be able to make it, but I know that a, a lot of folks will be there. Um, so if you can, please join. I might see you there.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. And happy Pride Month to our students and residents of Chelsea.
Can we sing a song?
With that, I'd like to close.
Can we sing a song? The song is called Sarah. Know that song, Sarah. We gotta miss you, Mrs. Cat. Thank you, Sarah, again.
Thank, thank you, Sarah, for real. I would sing it, Henry. We, we totally should have had like, I don't know, karaoke lyrics up or something, but.
For, for Sarah's sake.
I tried. I tried.
That is a very tough song.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hey, job, honey.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it, is it time to say much into a drink?
Not yet.
Okay.
I, I always save my last comment for, well, I save comments for last. Um, but team, I just want to give a, a warm closing to all of our students. Um, thank you to all the teachers. As a teacher myself, it has been a year. Um, so I, I want to thank all the supporting staff members, our custodial staff that kept and continue to keep our schools safe and clean. Um, to our school nurses who during the pandemic went above and beyond to help not only our students, but everyone in the community and continue to do so. To our central office team, thank you for never giving up on us, on our students and our families and for continuing once again to go above and beyond. So I thank you. To the school committee members, thank you for giving me this honor of chairing and, and being your chairman for two years in a row. Um, it has been, again, a very challenging year, but we made it. And I cannot wait to continue working together. I hope you all run for reelection. This team is amazing. Um, and I look forward to seeing you all in August during our first school committee meeting of the following school year. And so with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
We make a motion to adjourn.
My second rosemary motion.
Thank you, Leo.
Great. Alright, team. Thanks so much.
Have a good night.
Night, everybody.